Alrighty, well, it is seven o'clock. Again, thank you to each of you for taking time to spend with us to answer some questions. The focus on a lot of these questions are really about neighborhoods, which shouldn't be surprising. But then there's also some kind of broad questions to help the folks who wrote them understand what it is you are hoping to do, or how you'd like to see things run, and those kinds of philosophical-type questions. So I will read the first question, and then we're going to go in alphabetical order. You have 10 minutes each to do it. I'll cut you off when your 2 minutes is up. I won't try to be mean, but I will just cut you off because I want to be fair to everyone, so it's equal opportunity being cut off. And then we'll rotate alphabetically, so that you're not always going first or last. Okay? Everyone ready? Outstanding.
Yes, sir.
First question: What are your thoughts or plans on how to improve the image of Decatur, especially as it relates to neighborhood revitalization? And Ed, you are first.
Thank you, and thank you for the invite tonight. I've always believed that the neighborhood revitalization needs to be experienced, whether it's formal or informal leaders in the neighborhood or area. You need to identify which area it's in. This could be through the block grants, it could be through informal meetings, civic groups. But there's always a hand with the city can help us as well, because we know of some organizations now where they'll do some work on a house and remove it free, and the next thing you know, you have a sidewalk that's buckled through roots. That's where the city needs to step in and help them complete that portion of it. That's my take on it. It needs to be a grassroots type of idea, and I think the people are going to be motivated to step up and organize that, but also believe in block grants and any assistance we provide.
Excellent. Thank you. David?
Well, first of all, thank you so much for inviting me here, and I really appreciate Millikan Heights providing us with this opportunity. To improve the image of Decatur, we need to reverse the longstanding challenges that Decatur faces. And that begins with population decline, but also includes low median household income, high poverty rates, high unemployment rates. And to reverse population decline and to reduce some of these other metrics, it really starts with a plan. And we have to identify the reasons for population decline, how the city can be a part of that solution, and leverage the resources that the city has, and use the partners that the city has to really implement that plan. As it pertains to neighborhood revitalization, prior to the immediate health and economic crisis of COVID-19, the number-one priority of the city was neighborhood revitalization. And the city lacks a comprehensive plan to address neighborhood revitalization issues, and it needs it. And I'd like to compliment Millikan Heights for its plan and its seven principles that it's developed for revitalizing neighborhoods. And I think there's an opportunity to scale the seven principles that Millikan Heights has developed to the city as a whole.
Excellent. Thank you. Jacob, you are next.
Alan, first of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity to be with the Millikan Heights group on tonight and to share with you all some of my thoughts. You asked a very important question, and that being my thoughts on how we improve neighborhood revitalization. One of the ways we improve neighborhood revitalization is making sure that those who need it most are getting access to the resources. If we were to look at our neighborhoods that are hit the hardest, we would know that there has to be some type of immediate funding available, whether through micro lending, whether through matching donations, or through other grant programs, to where we can go in and beautify those neighborhoods. But I mean more than just planting flowers. You know, we've got to create homeowners. We've had to help homeowners become more sustainable, because the city's current policy is to leave holes in our communities, and the communities they're leaving holes in are on the east side of town, the west side of town, as well as the south side of town. And that is not a sustainable policy for growth or for making sure that everyone in our community feels welcome. So what we've got to do with neighborhood revitalization is to put some immediate dollars behind it and go beyond just rhetoric.
Thank you. Chuck, welcome to the event tonight. Appreciate you being here. We have started, we have a first question, so you haven't missed any questions yet. The question is: What are your thoughts or plans on how to improve the image of Decatur, especially as it relates to neighborhood revitalization? And while you might ponder that for a second, I'll let you know, the game plan is, you know, you have the 2 minutes to talk, respond to each question. We're going in alphabetical order, and then I'll rotate each time the question occurs, so that everyone has a chance of being first, middle, or last in responding. If you're comfortable in responding now, your time is up in this alphabetical order, so we'll go ahead and let you do your 2 minutes then.
First, I'd like to apologize to the rest of the candidates. I just got off working, so that's why I'm a few minutes late, so I apologize. My first thoughts, as I've mentioned before at council meetings, is that my preferred method for neighborhood revitalization would be to work from the center of the city outwards, okay? We have a nice win with our downtown, and I think it would be advantageous to work or build on that win. We could go north, like to Old King's Orchard, and also to the, I guess you'd call it the business area across from Crossing. There's some businesses there. I think if we could work our way north, that would be a good way to go. I'm in favor, you know, neighborhood revitalization or community revitalization, is how I actually like to say it, is more than just, as we know, tearing homes down. And I like what Mr. Samuels has done in town. I think that idea of bringing the youth into mowing our lots in town would be a great start, because we've got to engage those youths. As many of you know, I've talked ad nauseam about bike paths. We've had a win. We've partnered with the state of Illinois to have a community study done for bike paths in our town. You can go to www.bike-decatur-illinois.com and see where they are with that study. And finally, just, I mentioned bike paths. If you've noticed, along West Main Street, there is a bike path there that nobody really knew about, and I had signs put up so people could see that. So that would be my first answer, Alan.
Good. Thank you. All right. Marty?
First of all, Alan, I'd like to say thank you and thank Millikan Heights for this opportunity to speak with you all. I believe that neighborhood revitalization is very important. And if we can find money from the state of Illinois to do other things, the city council should be able to find money from the state of Illinois to address the need of revitalizing our neighborhoods. Now, I also feel that the city of Decatur, if it doesn't already exist, create a partnership with the Block-to-Block program. Now, this program, it goes into neighborhoods and it rehab houses that our owner lived in. And I feel that this is effective, because you get to see the results in an entire neighborhood instead of a spot here and a spot there. I've always said that happier neighbors produces happier neighborhoods. I also believe that we should get the trades and labor involved in this, so that their students can help with rehabbing, with this rehabbing process. And at the same time, they can receive certified training hours, so that we can get the houses that can be saved and rehabbed back on tax roll.
Excellent. Thank you. Will?
Hi, and thank you so much for having me here tonight. When it comes to neighborhood revitalization, it has to be a holistic approach that not only takes funds from the city and city leadership, but also enlists schools, neighborhood organizations, nonprofits, and the people who live in that community in order to build back, to build back better. The issue becomes, the issue becomes is if we're not all in lockstep, we're all trying to do our own thing, what we do is we lose, we lose a part of a overall plan. And that's what it comes down to. If we don't have that plan, if we're not willing to move forward as a community, as a whole, then neighborhood revitalization is not going to work out. And I think that's what we've seen in the past. So fundamentally, the city has to step up and be a leader with a plan and engage all the other community partners down to the actual people who live in the neighborhood in order to build back that neighborhood.
Thank you. All right. Our next question, and David, you'll be first on this question. So do you believe the current mayoral council type of government still works for Decatur? Or should we move to an aldermanic type of government to better represent our population? David, you're muted. I won't count that against you.
Thank you. The mayoral council type of government can work for Decatur, and I am open-minded and neutral toward an aldermanic form of government. If we are going to change our form of governance from an at-large aldermanic to, or I'm sorry, from at-large to aldermanic, I think this really needs to be a citizen-driven initiative. Here are some of the pros. This is likely to increase the geographic diversity of representation on the council. For example, I live within one mile of two other council members, and so it's, there is not geographic diversity in representation. Our members are geographically clustered, and I do not think there's a single council member who lives in the urban core, which is at the heart of our neighborhood revitalization efforts. When you don't see the challenges every day, it is very hard to advocate for solving them. And it can be argued very effectively that if the city council was required to spend time in some of our worst neighborhoods, there would be a much greater urgency in helping people in need and preventing violent crime. I think the con to that is that there's a potential that the aldermanic form of government will make it more difficult to address some of our challenges from a holistic perspective because of the focus individuals have on a particular district where their constituents live. But I would point out that this argument can also be made currently with state and national government. So ultimately, the citizens of Decatur need to think about...
That is time.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Alan, another great question. I am a proponent of aldermanic government, and I'm a proponent of it for these reasons. When you look at how the current city council is set up and how it's been for the past 30 or 40 years, there's a band around the city where city council people have come from. And that leaves zero representation for large swaths of the city going from Oakland, by where Millikan is, all the way out to 22nd Street. That is an unsustainable model for governance, and it leaves a lot of money out of those neighborhoods that need it the most. When the city of Decatur reached 7,000 people, it was eligible to switch to an aldermanic form of government. But what we saw was, it didn't do it. It stayed the way that it stayed. And since that time, we've only had four African-Americans who have served on city council. We know some have run. We know that even me, I'm fighting an uphill battle because of the at-large system, but I'm determined to run a great race. But back to my point that, yes, I am a fan of aldermanic government. Springfield did it. It did it well. We can learn from the model that Springfield has used, as well as the model of other cities that have our demographics have used. And we can be the city that we want to be by eventually going to this form of governance.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So I'm in favor of our current type of government. I think it served the city well. Obviously, there would be disagreement here amongst the other candidates. I do think Councilman Horn alluded to it. It does have to be a referendum by the citizens, all right? The city council itself cannot change the form of government, so it would have to be some type of referendum by the citizens. One idea, I'm not sure I'd be for it or against it, would be a hybrid version, where you might have four aldermanic wards and three at-large. I believe Champagne does something like that. And I think the reason that I'm a little fearful of going to the ward system is people just being self-serving for their own area. You know, I live in South Shores. I can't really remember one issue in the last four years that I've made a decision just for South Shores. So I don't, I feel I have represented the city. And I can understand why people don't think I represent the city, because I don't live in this inner city. But again, all I can say is I've never really voted for anything for my area specifically. Thank you.
Great.
Once again, I'm open-minded to the aldermanic position. But then I asked a question: How did we get to this question? What brought it about? And I feel that right now, the former government that we currently have, I believe it does work. But it would be more effective if our city council members would be willing to serve and visit the entire city, not just the neighborhoods that they live in. And not taking a stab at anybody, because I've put signs out too, but, you know, this is campaign time. And the neighbors only see candidates in their neighborhoods when it's election time, to put signs out. And we need, like myself, we need city council people who will go and talk to the residents who live in the inner city, as well as the outskirts of the city. We need council members who have all neighborhoods at heart. Now, if we look at the aldermanic form of government, it can be costly to the taxpayers by redistricting. Depending on how the lines are drawn and the census report comes out, this could happen every 10 years. So we want to look at that down the road, what it could cost this community for that. Thank you.
Fundamentally, when we look at who has served in city councils in the past 20 years, we have had one person who has actually lived north of Route 36. That is a fundamental issue for the entire city. If, as Dr. Horn alluded to, if we have three city councilors that live within a mile of each other, many that, like Jacob alluded to, that we don't have anyone that lives in the actual urban core. And we miss, and we have historically missed, large swaths of Decatur. We cannot call ourselves fully represented, fully represented in the current city council model. So I am in favor of moving to an aldermanic system. It has to go through to be a referendum, and I would even say that we expand from a six-members-and-a-mayor to a mayor and 10 members. So we actually have more representation, and that will lead us to having a more diverse and more diversity in terms of socioeconomic status, race, and ideas that will help us to build a better Decatur. Thank you.
You're muted, Ed. You're still muted.
All right. Sorry about that.
No worries.
I stand based position on this, and I think Mr. Jenkins said it best with the perception that not everybody is being represented. And I do agree to a certain point. Like Springfield, they do have the aldermanic system, but you'd have to have a very strong mayor operational duty. You're not even talking about the city manager at that time. You have to talk about a mayor also. It would change just more than the representation of the councilman. I'm in a unique position. I'm very familiar with the neighborhood community profiles. I understand Mr. Jenkins' concern. I respect that. I hope more people will step up in the future, run, and whether it's one time or numerous times, if they're determined to get in, they need to run their area if they best they can. And that's, I think, fitting for us now, not even working well. I wish that more councilmen were in the city as it should be to help with the issues we have right now.
Ed, it may just be my end of things, but your mic seems to kind of cut in and out. So I don't know if you have an ability to speak closer to it, or, I mean, I don't see like you're moving much, but it does seem to cut out a little bit as you're talking, and I certainly want everyone to be able to hear what you have to say and share. All right. Our next question: What do you think is the single biggest issue facing our city, and what would you do to combat it? And Jacob, you're first.
Okay, so I think the single biggest issue that's facing our city right now is actually, is crime. And I think that we have to be more aggressive on how we particularly deal with that issue. And the reason why I'm highlighting crime as an issue is, and so what I mean is a web, you know, it involves the perception of the city, how outside companies and manufacturers look at it. It involves how people who would move here and bring their kids to go into our school district. You know, it encompasses all of that. So by taking a real good look at how to deal with our crime situation, especially in our urban core, I think if we can address that, it will help to bring in more jobs. It will help to bring in more families, and it will help just the overall ethos of those communities to feel safer and a more part of Decatur. Because currently, you know, there's, Decatur is the tale of two cities, one of Uberin's wealth and one of great poverty. So it's like, how do you balance that? And one of the ways you do that is by working on that crime issue and the perception of Decatur being a vital place.
Chuck, can you?
Sorry, didn't hear, sorry, didn't hear you. Oh, yeah. So I agree with Jacob. Crime is definitely number one on the list. And before I go into my comments on it, I just want to say that it's a problem everywhere. It's not just Decatur. And I don't want people to think that we have more crime than anywhere else. I think this whole COVID thing has driven the crime everywhere. So I'd like to make that statement. I fully support funding our police to the highest limit that our budget will allow. We need to stand by our police. I've mentioned many times, after Chief Getz came to our city council meeting with our study session, that he was in favor, and he thinks would help if we had more neighborhood cameras in the neighborhoods. And at that time at the meeting, I said, "Okay, let's do that." And they talked about waiting till 2022 and wait to see how the Johns Hill area works out, because they're going to put cameras in there. And I just said, "What are we waiting for?" I don't want to wait till the summer of 2022. We've got the summer of 2021 coming up. And I think there's things coming down the pipeline that may advance that issue faster than we thought. And I have not looked into this. I need to look into this. But I just wonder about that Crime Stoppers program. I wonder if there's some way we can enhance that, because also Chief Getz has said many times, one of the biggest reasons that we're not solving crime is people don't want to speak up, and they're scared. And I understand why they're scared. I'd be scared. And I just wonder if there's some way that if we look at that Crime Stoppers program and enhance it, that might help get people to speak up more.
Okay, 2 minutes is up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As we all are aware of, that your finances will do one or two things. It would either make you or either break you. And I believe the biggest, the single biggest issue is the city budget. City spending should reflect its tax base. And when the city keeps borrowing more and more money as we continue to lose more and more residents, those of us who remains in the city will be forced to cover the difference. I would make sure that we spend on what is needed and that we don't move money from another source to make up that shortage, which would then leave that account short. I also believe that we need to fix things when we can instead of waiting, which will cost us more in the long run. I had heard it allude to cameras. There were cameras in the city of Decatur. I visit the urban city on a daily basis. There were cameras in the neighborhoods, and the city said they had no more money to operate these cameras. So we need budget to make sure that we spend for what is needed in our city. Thank you.
I think that the largest, the largest issue facing Decatur is population decline. For 40 years, we have been shrinking. And right now, we are shrinking at a faster rate than we have ever, we ever have before. That's 7/10 of a percent a year, 7% over the last 10 years. And if we continue to go, go down that rate, that road, we will end up somewhere in the next 10 years, around 60, 60,000 to 65,000 people. What we absolutely have, and as we shrink, as we shrink, there is less for everyone, and that leads to crime. That leads to budget deficits that forces us into a position that is untenable, untenable, and makes it harder for us all to live inside the city of Decatur. So what we have to do is first, look at jobs and opportunity. Find jobs, bring jobs to Decatur that just don't help people get by, but actually help them build up a life at $16 to $25 an hour, and then, or more. And we can do that by focusing on agribusiness, focusing on manufacturing, and looking, focusing on technology jobs, and bringing ourselves, bringing ourselves into the 21st century. As we build that up, and we begin to flip the script on shrinking, things will get better. We will have more money to do things to not only fight crime, but have deterrence programs, make sure the kids have enough, make sure our families have enough. And I, and it comes back to that we have to stop shrinking, and we have to come up with a plan. The city has to come up with a plan and a leadership plan to make sure that we look for the next 15 years that we're either going to grow or plateau.
Right. Ed? You're muted. There you go.
Well, obviously, the biggest thing for us right now is revenue reduction. We've got residents leaving. We've got businesses leaving. I think this is a time, whether it's COVID or not, we need to stop. We need to see how we can be more competitive with the Bloomberg campaign. What are we doing wrong? Is it our fees? Is it our communication with development? Time and time again, during this journey I've had, I've talked to developers and even landlords that buy properties that would be demolished, fix them up, and the next thing they know, they got fines. We need to start working with these people and figure out what we can do. Now, there's nothing about our workforce. We've got great local labors and unions, and we have workforce solutions. We need to keep up with the manufacturing that's occurring now and show that we have the staff available. We need to continue our training in the areas of their production as well. As they grow, we need to grow workforce. Thank you.
The number-one problem that the city of Decatur is facing right now is population decline. Decatur is in the top 10 in the country for percentage population decline, and we have lost 7.1% of our population since 2010. Specifically, we've lost nearly 6,000 residents. And as was discussed in the Herald and Review today, every 1,000-person decline represents a $171,000-per-year revenue reduction from the state. And so we're already... And so we're already looking at about $1 million in lost revenue to help support some of our social service programs that the state is funding. In addition, the city of Decatur was recently ranked as the poorest city in Illinois. In order to combat population decline, I think we need to have a three-pronged approach. This includes public safety, job creation, and neighborhood revitalization. Very briefly, COVID-19 was, and still is, the most significant health crisis we face. And we lost 182 Macon County residents to COVID-19. That is over 70% higher per capita death rate than any other central Illinois county with a mid-sized city. In addition, our violent crime went up 30% and our number of fires was the highest it's been in 10 years. We have lost 1,500 jobs in 2020 and we need to find ways to increase the number of jobs. I think there's great synergies with neighborhood revitalization to do that.
Time's up. I worked that well. All right. Our next question, and Chuck, you'll be first to respond. A city cannot be expected to rely heavily on the funds from one individual or group. What is your plan to move Decatur to a fiscally responsible and financially stable city?
Uh, two things. One is we need to continue to build up our rainy day fund at the city. We, we were up at about, uh, I think 45 to 47 days. And then COVID hit and now we're in the 30s. Uh, our goal was to get to 60 days. That was a council, uh, decision to make that one of our goals. So we need to try to get our general fund back up to 60 days of operating expenses. And we need to continue to work with Economic Development Corporation here in Decatur. I spoke with, uh, the office this week and, um, they've had, they told me in a year's time, they've had 700 companies take a look at Decatur in some way, shape, or form. So this is going on. The problem, a lot of people just don't see what's going on because sometimes they have to keep it a little bit undercover because businesses don't want, uh, everybody knowing what they're doing, if they're looking at the city. But they also told us that through a year, they are, uh, how would I say it? Deeply involved with 15 to 20 of these companies coming to Decatur. So this is going on and I think we need to continue to work with them. As David knows, we, we provide a lot of key votes, uh, when they do bring these businesses to town, because they do need to work with the city council on different items when they do come to town. Thank you.
Marty?
Thank you very much. Uh, I would like to say that economic development affects the entire way that our city functions and it also affects some of our community programs. Economic development is a key component in our city's development. This will bring in new businesses, which increases our tax base. This will allow us as a city council to do the things that we need to do. But between time, we must look at rewriting some ordinances and some policies that will make business expansion, recruitment, and attraction easier. When businesses are expanding and the city is requiring them to spend extra money to put up bushes, or when someone wants to expand their parking lot to spaces for $20,000, the city is not being fair to the business who is willing to reinvest and to their business to help this community. So I think, again, we need to be more business friendly and continue to work, uh, with economic development, which I spoke with that office last week. And I made a suggestion to a, uh, about a water company coming to Decatur and she stated she would look into that to see if it's feasible. She said, Marty, uh, that was a great idea. We have the water source, let's look into it. Thank you.
Will?
I think fundamentally it comes down to two things. The first is to build upon the businesses, uh, that we currently already have, those in agribusiness, uh, those in the sectors of agribusiness and manufacturing. As we entertain new businesses and new projects like a Nova Feed, we will begin to diversify, uh, diversify in those industries. The second thing that, uh, the second stream has to be, the second stream has to be looking at new and diversified industries. We can, we can join the 21st century by going after, uh, tech businesses. We can do things like piggyback off of the, uh, piggyback off of the, uh, new fiber optic network that the city just, uh, the city's putting in, in and through, which lowers the cost, uh, lowers the cost of entry to, uh, new technology and data warehousing businesses. We can continue to build up our small businesses and our micro businesses and really take a look at, uh, take a look at what industries are growing the fastest and what industries that our workers could transition, uh, can tran, transition into. And there's a whole host of things that we can do and we just have to be open to them.
Ed?
I think this is going to piggyback a little bit on the previous question, economic development. Because what we're doing right now is not working. It's getting us from one budget year to the next. We're soaking up from the fines, we're soaking up from the taxpayers. We're trying to make ends meet year to year. We're not thinking about the bigger picture. We need to make ourselves more attractive and that's through our actions. Our actions need to be more welcoming to, uh, bringing business in instead of banging them with a bunch of fines here and there and then put them back on the taxpayers. Balance. So we definitely need to put our work forward and revamp everything. That's why I believe like three and four together, uh, to make it more difficult to study economic development. We have to redo it. We have to start scratch and start all over again.
David?
Well, the city of Decatur certainly is facing significant challenges when it comes to maintaining financial stability without either raising taxes or reducing public services. And as an elected official, I can tell you the one thing that I've heard for four years is don't raise taxes and don't cut services. And so the other option that is available to us is economic growth. And economic growth can come in multiple forms. The first way it can come is by attracting new businesses to our city and providing economic incentives to do that. And I think the best example of that was a Nova Feed where this is a company that may be investing up to $50 million into the city of Decatur and bringing not only long-term permanent jobs, but also short-term construction jobs. The second thing is we need to be open to new industries. One such industry that the city council has said no to is the cannabis industry. A cultivation center is a $20 million facility. They are allowed in the unincorporated areas of Macon County, but they're not allowed in the city of Decatur and that needs to change. Thirdly, we need to think about opportunities to look at our zoning laws as well as some of our ordinances to make them more friendly toward businesses that might want to invest here. Finally, I would mention that the city of Decatur really needs to think about how it can increase its funding to the community and economic development department. That will be another solution.
Jacob?
Um, all of them have touched on some very important parts, uh, points that I myself would make and I, but I don't want to reiterate that. So, um, the one thing I will say is that there's a billion dollar, uh, cash crop that's, uh, that's around the corner and it's cannabis. And so with, uh, Decatur being an agriculture hub, the fact that we host the Farm Progress Show, you know, it really puts us in position to do something, um, very powerful with a new crop. David Horn brings up a $20 million facility. I'm also in favor of having a cottage industry to where you can infuse as well as do other things of working with our universities, because we have such brilliance here. And there's an opportunity for real economic recovery when it comes to this crop and making Decatur, you know, the Mecca for not in the state of Illinois. We can process in our facilities, we can test it in our labs, we can transport it in our trucks. You know, we've got everything here that we need to dig ourselves out of the red. You talk about a rainy day fund. You want to know what makes for a really good rainy day fund? Taking about 20 million to 40 million dollars of cannabis taxes and putting it in that account. That's how you make sure we're able to pay for prop, for fire protection. That's how you're able to make sure we're able to pay for public safety, uh, as far as law enforcement. And that's how we do neighborhood revitalization as well as reinvest in our schools. And you know who we bring on as partners with that? We bring on trades and labor because they've already got the ingenuity, they've already got the manpower, and they've already got the spirit to make it, get it done.
Thank you. Our next question, uh, Marty, you'll be first to respond to. Decatur has seen an uptick in violent crime in the last year. What do you think is the cause and what would you try to do to stem the violence? Uh, you're, you're muted. Marty, you're muted.
Are we there?
Yep.
Okay. Don't, don't hold that against me. If you've been keeping up with the news, about a month ago, I held a news conference addressing this issue. This is a community problem and it will take the whole community to resolve it. Now, the causes of this can relate from a number of things. The selling of illegal drugs such as marijuana. Again, the state of Illinois took in $100 million in taxes off of marijuana sales. So the sales of illegal drugs, the lack of education, poverty, despaired neighborhoods, unemployment, or it's just a simple way of, of life. But as a city councilman, uh, I will work together with the citizens, the law enforcement to find a solution to combat this problem. I had a meeting today, uh, with some gentlemen and, uh, we are sitting down, trying to iron out a plan where we can address this issue and come up with a solution. But it's going to take all of us working together to solve this problem. Thank you.
Will?
I believe that this uptick in violence is an economic one. As we see throughout the United States, uh, especially through COVID-19, as people lose jobs, they turn to black market activities. And the things that keep these black market activities, uh, going are violence. That's how they, that's how those organizations enforce and keep their market is through violence. So fundamentally, we have to look at the economic solutions to this, which is finding a way to actually build up, uh, build up anti-poverty programs and build up, uh, build up the opportunity to go to work and actually have a job that, have a, have a job that builds a better life. Now, immediately what we can do is work with police in the communities, uh, communities that are most affected and to build a dialogue to be able to get through this spate of violence now. And then instead of waiting for it just to become cyclical and continue to push through cyclically, what we have to do is build, uh, build up with the schools and the city of Decatur, uh, and the city of Decatur and grassroots organizations, uh, not only a deterrence program, but also match that up with neighborhood revitalization, economic opportunities, trades of labor, and build, build a better way forward and ha, have people have the opportunity to build a better life instead of consistently facing down poverty and crime and all of the things that go with being poor. Thanks.
Ed?
Right now, the violence we have right now is, is back and forth. They're not communicating with the police, not cooperating. The police are taking care of themselves. I know Chief Guess has reached out to state and federal authorities to take a look at some of our cases and go federal. We did that in mid to late 90s, uh, as well. Very successful. Down to zero. So there's possibilities, but the biggest root issue right now is there's no proactive policing. You've got a state bill right now that just passed that literally, no pun intended, handcuffed our officers statewide, not just our, our Decatur. Uh, but also we're not responding, we're strictly reactive, we're not doing proactive policing, we're not getting out and talking to people and, and sharing our relationships with them right now. The only thing we've been doing lately is going around finding restaurants that are open and violating ordinance. I mean, we, we need to get back to the roots of policing and getting engaged with the community. And I think once COVID lifts a little bit more, we can start getting back in the community.
David?
Well, there's mu, many factors that are influencing violent crime and its uptick. When we think about family dynamics, uh, individual choices that people make as well as the environment in which one lives, all of those are going to play a role in violent crime. In the short term, this is not something that the police can do by themselves. It's not something that the city council can do by itself. I think everyone has to ask themselves what they might be able to do, uh, to reduce the, the crime that we have. And the phrase, if you see something, say something resonates here. And I think one way to do that is Crime Stoppers, which is anonymous. But in the long term, we must reverse the long-term challenges that the city of Decatur faces. As I mentioned earlier today, uh, the city has been listed as the poorest city in the United, I'm sorry, in Illinois. And that means higher poverty. It means less median household income. And in addition, um, we need to make sure that we have sufficient educational attainment and opportunities. One example where this is a possibility is summer youth programs. The city of Decatur is spends hundreds of thousands of dollars mowing vacant lots. There is an opportunity to get our youth employed, to give them disposable income and to give them opportunities. And I think we got to strive for that.
Jacob?
I'm going to take a different approach than everyone on here, um, looking at what's going on with the violence, violence here in Decatur, uh, especially with all of the shootings. So, um, anyone who knows anything knows that the shootings are back and forth. So you shoot someone, their people come in and they shoot you. That's not something we're trying to bring the citizens into. You know, so when we're saying that we need the community involved, when we're saying that we need the city council involved, no, you need law enforcement involved. And I'm glad that they brought in the FBI, DEA, and whoever else, because we need to get the guns off the streets and we need to make sure that that violence is not happening in the community. Here is the, here is the problem. Many of the people on here are detached from what goes on in those neighborhoods. So they're going to give you a professorial answer. But the realistic, uh, answer when talking with Rodney Walker and others who know what's going on, it's, it's a back and forth. And Crime Stoppers isn't going to fix that or anything else like that, because the people in those communities, they don't trust law enforcement. They've had a negative opinion of law enforcement and it's a national opinion that, you know, that is held by many. So it's not going to change that way. What needs to happen is the FBI or whoever else, they come in and they clean up the streets and they work with law enforcement to maintain that. And then you get into community policing. But the best thing we can do for community policing is make sure that, uh, police live in the community, that they go to school in these neighborhoods. I mean, that their kids go to school in these neighborhoods. That's true community policing. And we know the city council, uh, currently is, uh, or they're currently fighting back and forth on that issue right now on whether or not to, uh, honor that residency requirement. So let's look at it and bring the police into the community and let's bring in the FBI and whoever else is needed to make sure that the violence and everything as far as the murderer back and forth stops because mothers are heartbroken. That's, thank you, sorry.
I appreciate it. That's good. Chuck?
Well, you asked me earlier what I thought the number one issue in Decatur was, and I said crime. So most of my comments were said before. I do think COVID had a lot to do with what's going on with the crime. I think, you know, I, I just want to support our police in town. And I know Mr. Jenkins just said, bring in the FBI, the Illinois State Police, so on and so forth. And I think that's important, but I think the experts are our police officers in town. And so I think we really need to continue to support them to the best of our ability. One thing nobody's talked about is their mental health. I think we need to keep our officers in great shape mentally as well. A lot of times you hear about trying to bring mental health workers into a challenging situation. But I think more importantly, we need to take care of our police officers and keep them in great shape mentally because these guys are under stress, not daily, but hour by hour when they go out and work. And I think it's very important that, that we take a look at that. Thank you.
Mentioned this real quickly, there's been some comments in the chat portion. I certainly would encourage the candidates, you know, we put this posted up on our website and on Facebook. Probably worth reviewing that just to see what people are providing as commentary. You know, given our Zoom world that we've been in for last year, it's a little tough to have a whole lot of interplay and have it meaningful. So that's why we've got the format that we have. But hopefully that the questions that were submitted are representative of what the concerns are of our neighbors. Our next question, Will, you'll be first on this go around. Decatur has many dilapidated and abandoned buildings. What are your plans for taking care of this problem? And what are your ideas for repurposing the areas once those buildings are removed?
Fundamentally, when you lose your 25% of your population, you don't need 25% of your housing stock. And those houses have to come down. If they cannot be sold, if they cannot be repaired, then they have to come down. And if the homeowner can't do it, then the city has to step up and take them down because they provide a life safety and a health risk to those neighborhood, to those neighborhoods that they are in. Furthermore, for large-scale old manufacturing buildings like we see in the old Levy District, those buildings also will have to come down if, if we can't find some sort of business, some sort of office-style business to go in there because manufacturing needs have changed over the past 100 years since those were built. So it becomes that the city needs to, to develop a scoring system that goes through and looks at those abandoned buildings and says, these are the ones, these are the ones fundamentally that we can save. And these are the ones that we know that we're going to have to tear down one year, two year, three year. And then we have to make that investment. We have to make that investment to bring those, bring those houses and buildings down. And there's no good way around that unless we change and start to grow. And even then, even then, a lot of these houses, houses and buildings will be too far gone. As to what to do with, to do with that property, until we have new development, it will have to, the city will have to continue to pay for that upkeep unless we, unless they are picked up through a side yard program or sold, sold off. It's just something that we're going to have to consistently invest in and spend money on until we start to grow as a city. Thank you.
Ed.
Well, I do agree with Will on some of that because I do think they need to be looked at a little bit closer because as time goes on, when they are abandoned, you've got transients and so forth in there and they're trying to stay warm and it becomes a fire issue. But the longer it sits, the longer you're going to have foundation damage, trust saggin' where it's just going to be totaled altogether. So I, I think we need to keep up on a scale of what's salvageable, what's not. That goes back to our local citizens. Some of these have good groups. So we're coming up with a conference with the Here on Land Works Association. They are getting these homes from the share sales or whatever, and they are making, they're habitable. And we need to work with them as well. And I'd like to see that, maybe possibly Habitat for Humanity. If we've got a decent house with good bones, maybe they can look at that as a, as a starting point. But if you have a vacant lot, you have a vacant lot. You have to rezone it or whatever you're going to do. But I definitely think, I do agree with Will, we need to scale it to where we're protecting these, not letting them sit years where they're just totally gone.
David.
Well, when it comes to the demolition of houses and more broadly neighborhood revitalization, I once again state it starts with a comprehensive plan. And then it's followed by action on the plan. And for four years, we've been talking about neighborhood revitalization being the number one priority. And we still don't have a comprehensive plan. And so that's something that needs to change. I think one of the things that we need to do is if a house is unsafe, it, and it cannot be rehabilitated, it needs to be demolished. And to give you some perspective, at a recent study session on neighborhood revitalization, city staff estimated that to keep pace with the rate of blight, we may have to demolish as many as 200 housing units a year. That would be at an average cost of $15,000 or $3 million a year in demolitions alone. This does not even account for what I think is another important need, which is rehabilitation of houses that have the potential to be saved. We have about 4,000 vacant housing units in the city of Decatur. And if we are not vigilant, many of those houses may go from livable to on a violation list, to houses that are unfit for human habitation. And so I think another key element is not just demolition, but is how do we stop houses from deteriorating in the first place? And that would be part of a plan.
Jacob.
Alan, that's another, another great question. The first part I'll tackle is the larger mayor, the larger factories. You know, when getting rid of those, it's really important to make sure that the ones that are brown sites, you know, that are from that industrial age where they had those chemicals and different things like that, that we are making sure that those are cleaned up safely, that those are demolished safely. So we really want to work with experts. We want to work with the unions as well as either get those down. But for the ones that can be repurposed, it's an excellent opportunity to build new housing. What am I saying? Down in the San Luis area, they build lots, they build townhouses, or they build lots and other, other types of structures like that to offer a different type of living, to bring in a younger crowd. The other thing that we have to worry about is he's saying that when, as we're tearing down these blocks or turning down these houses, they're making vacant lots. That's an excellent opportunity to house our unhoused population. We have 135 of them. We can find 135 lots to make integrated communities and provide housing as well as everything they need for 135 unhoused families in our community. And we can do that either through grants or through a block grant or through partnerships with larger donors or through federal or state funding. So there's opportunities here to solve our housing problem. And for the rest of the houses, he's talking about the 4,000 houses, what we can do is micro lending to bring more people onto the roads. We're talking about people leaving the city. We're talking about the hemorrhaging. The way you do it is you bring people back onto the tax base. How do you do that? You incentivize living in communities that.
Jacob, you, you cut yourself off, but you cut yourself off at two minutes. So that I guess works out fairly well.
I've got to internal clock.
Oh, very nice, very nice. Chuck.
Alan, I have a question for you before I answer this. Are we discussing, your question is dilapidated and abandoned buildings? And then we've got some members here talking about housing. So what are you specific, are you asking about buildings or houses before I answer?
I think that the term building is generic in that it could be a residential house or it could be a factory or any structure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, when you said building, I was thinking, you know, larger buildings versus homes. So, okay, so for homes, when I got on the city council, I don't think they were tearing any homes down. And I think in 2019, we tore 60 homes down. And last year, we got 30 homes torn down. I think it was slowed down mainly because of COVID and the court system slowed down. So I am going to meet with the city manager and I'm sure he'll meet with David. He's got some thoughts about moving forward in the future. But I think we're going to have to make some tough decisions with our general budget to decide where we're going to allocate our money. You know, it costs about 15,000 per home to, to take these homes down. What can we do with these homes in these areas? And, and I want to go back to Mr. Jenkins. You know, those large businesses, that's a challenge tearing those down. That's very, very expensive. If, if we can get those down, it would be a nice place to try to build new homes. I agree with that. We need to maybe just clear some of this land to make it more viable for investment. That would be a step. You know, indoor farming is a possibility on some of these, this property. On retail, some of our retail has just been overbuilt, like it's been overbuilt in a lot of cities. And we've had a couple small wins with this Harbor Freight that they took over Aldi. And then I think, I can't remember if it was Dollar General or one of those dollar stores took over the video store, I think Family Video. So I think that that's a positive thing. But I think we'll have to, you know, as David said, we have a lot of homes to tear down. And I guess it just comes down to where you want to spend the money. We could spend it all on tearing homes down, but then maybe your roads aren't as good or something like that. And it's a challenge trying to balance where you're going to spend the money because there's a lot of places too. Thank you.
Marty.
Well, first of all, I believe that we should have the owners take responsibility and return the buildings or the homes back into productive use. Also, if the city doesn't have one, we should have an ordinance that requires the owner to notify the city when a property is abandoned. And I believe this is what gotten us in the situation that we're in now is that people have left these properties and disappeared. And the city has no way of contacting them. And also we must understand there's a process, there's a title process that must be going through before the city can tear down the property. Now, what I think we can do is some of the buildings, for example, could be used as warehouse space or even turned into multiple, multifamily units. They can also be offered for potential businesses. And if a building must be removed, that area can be utilized as a green space. And I think that one of the things I said was that if we have a house that can be rehabbed, sell it at a very low cost. And if that individual can show you where it takes 25,000 to rehab that house, give them that house, let them put the 25,000 in it, bring it back up to par. And now you have a house back on tax roll. Thank you.
All right. Well, we are going to end this with one more question. Do want to thank you all again for your time and effort for thinking about these questions that are concerning all of us. We did have other questions that we didn't get to. There were some other questions that were kind of answered based upon what the other questions led to, which is good. But I will tell folks that are listening tonight, there are other opportunities to hear the candidates. The newspaper is doing a session, I believe, on Thursday. And I think the landlord association is doing a session next Tuesday as well. I certainly encourage you to get out there and vote. Milken Heights, of course, is not endorsing any candidates, but we certainly endorse everyone getting out to vote. So our last question.
Alan, Alan, real quick, that's Wednesday night for the Herald Review.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. It's a Wednesday night, and I think they're doing it maybe off their Facebook page. But it was in the paper today for sure. They had a little to it. So our last question, and Ed, you'll be first. What was the main driver that led you to seek out this position on city council?
Well, nothing in particular, more than less that I love the city of Decatur. And I believe that we could do more for our local businesses. We want them to grow, but that's also bringing residents back. I don't like the shrinking population. I want us to make more, be more attractive developers. And I want a small family or young family to drive in with a Realtor thinking about, wow, this is a really nice place. I'll go with my family here because we all did. We all enjoyed it. So I, I want to bring that back to Decatur as well, but we have to rethink how we're doing things more competitive than we are. Got some new thinking I'm planning on bringing in.
David.
Well, the reason I'm running for reelection is because I have a deep care for the well-being of the 70,000 residents that call Decatur home. And I have the strongest commitment to helping people. I love Decatur, Illinois. It's my home and I would not trade the people who live here for any other group of individuals anywhere. The other thing is that I have a unique background on the council as a professor and a scientist at Milliken University, as a small business owner and has, as someone who has spent the majority of my life living in other areas besides the city of Decatur. And I think that range of experiences brings a, a unique perspective to the council and to serving our citizens that I'd like to continue.
Thank you. Jacob.
I ran because we were, we're at a watershed moment in Decatur. And the decisions we make now will affect the city for the next 10 years. I'm a public servant. You know, I've worked for the state of Illinois for the past seven years, helping the families that are in need. That's just what I do, servicing over 20,000 residents here in Decatur. I'm a union president. I'm responsible for the jobs of 300 people. I'm a labor leader here in this community, working with Decatur churches and labor, as well as I'm a community advocate. I'm an organizer and I love Decatur. You know, I, I advocate for everyone. I advocate for the homeless. I advocate for our students. And I think it's important that it's time for our council to be diversified. We see that it seems as if council right now only does the bidding of special interests. I really hate to say that, but that's the record that I have, that I've seen and what I stand on. So it's time for somebody to be in there that represent working families. You know, I'm, I live in South Shores, but I'm a part of, I'm part of the urban core, from my church to my, the people I have mentored, to the work I've done with the chamber and beyond. I love Decatur and I'm staying here and I'm in the fight. And I will put my record up against any candidate here on tonight.
Thank you. Chuck.
Well, the main reason I ran for city council is frankly, just to give back to the city. I really didn't have an agenda. I just wanted to try to make the city that I grew up in, I've worked 40 years in, I've raised my family in, to continue to be a great place to live. We have issues. There's no question. We heard all about them tonight. Every city has those issues. And since I've got two minutes, I'm going to tell you a funny story. When I was 15 years old, I was training for my tennis game up in the Chicago area. And I remember somebody complaining about their local newspaper. And I thought, that's funny. People complain about our newspaper in Decatur. Huh, that's interesting. And it's kind, and I've never forgotten that. And it's just, it's like that everywhere. Everybody seems to complain about their town and we hear the negative. Well, this is a great place to live. There's a lot of positive things that go on in this town and we don't talk about them enough. All we hear about is the negative. When I come to these city council meetings, we get hammered. I get hammered over all these negative things. Well, we have a lot of positive things going on in this town and I want to be a positive force on the council. And I want people to remember that we have positive things going on in this town. And I want to help solve the problems so that we can continue to be a great place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Marty.
The main drive that led me to run for city council is that I am a lifelong resident of Decatur. I have a heart for the city of Decatur. And as I mentioned before, my family was one of the first back families to settle in Decatur. And they have made many positive contributions to this community. I grew up in this community. I work in youth summer programs. I'm running because I want to see programs reinstalled, such as the junior firefighters, the police explorers, the Macon County Sheriff Cadet. I was a sheriff cadet at the age of 15. That gave me opportunity for future. And I want to see these programs reinstated to help give our youth a chance in life. I have four generations of family that lives here in this city. I want Decatur to be a place where generations of people will want to live, work, and play. Thank you.
Wonderful. Again, thank you, gentlemen, for your time and your efforts. And then certainly putting yourselves out there to run for public office is never an easy thing. Well, I apologize, Will. My apologies. I did not mean to cut you off. Will, your two minutes.
Um, it's no problem. I want to advocate for everyone in the city in Decatur. I think for too long, city councils left the sector of the community behind. You know, the poor, the young, people that haven't had the chance to exercise their voice. Or when they're, when they do exercise their voice, it isn't heard. So I want to advocate for those, for everyone. But I want to make sure that when stepping into this position, if I'm elected, is to make sure that I'm speaking for 70,000 people, listening, listening to and serving, listening to and serving them. And then the second thing is, when I was 18 years old, my parents, I'm 35 now, okay? I graduated as an R.I. High School in 2003. When I was 18 years old, my parents sat me down and said, there's no future for you here in Decatur. There's nothing, there is not a good place for you to be here, and you need to get out. And tons of my friends, of my family have been told that. And I don't want to have, want to have that conversation with my kid, she's five now, when she graduates in 13 years. We need to build a Decatur that not only serves everyone, but allows people to build a future. And that's why I'm running.
Thank you very much. So yes, thank you to all of you. I appreciate your efforts. We'll get this posted maybe tonight, but definitely by tomorrow. And I'll send you all links so you can have that to look at and review. And thank you to everyone that came in tonight to listen in to our city council candidates. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Appreciate you putting this on. Thank you.
Nice job.
Thank you for the opportunity.